Good evening, everyone. Seeing that it's 7:00 PM, I'm going to call this meeting of the Capitola Planning Commission to order. And before we get to the agenda, I do want to announce this meeting is Cablecast Live on Charter Communications, Cable TV Channel 8 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. It's being recorded and will be replayed on Monday and Friday at 1:00 PM on Charter Channel 71 and Comcast Channel 25. You can also view tonight's meeting from the city's website, which is www.cityofcapitola.org. And tonight, our technician is Lynn Dutton. With that, may we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Newman? Commissioner Welch?
Here.
Chairperson Story?
Here. Will you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First, we'll start with new business tonight. And the first item, under 2A, is the commission roster update. And we have a consideration brought to the Planning Commission concerning the commission's participation on the Traffic and Parking Commission. Can we start with the staff report?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you're aware, the city is changing the composition of many of its commissions to include a student member. And as part of that effort, we took a look at some of the other members and appointees that are on those commissions and are checking to see if they want to continue. As you're aware, over the years, there's been -- it's been difficult sometimes to get a willing volunteer for traffic and parking. And so we thought it would be a good time to ask the Planning Commission if they want to continue to have a participant on that committee. And whatever you decide today, we'll report to the City Council at their next meeting to change the composition.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions from commissioners to the staff report? If I -- oh, no, you go ahead, TJ. You're our representative on the --
Well, I don't -- I don't have questions, but first of all, I probably should apologize because if I led people to believe I wasn't willing to do it, that would be, you know, a mistake on my part. I have shared my frustrations with being on the committee. And if you've been around the last couple of months, you probably would understand why. But that has nothing to do with my willingness to do it. So to me, it wasn't really a willingness. So I apologize if that came across as I wasn't willing to be on the commission.
And to be clear, I don't think this was reflective of Commissioner Welch's desire to be on it necessarily. I think it goes back a number of years, whether, you know, there was an interested member.
I just have a comment. I know when you reached out and said, you know, how did we feel about that? I know that in my tenure as a planning commissioner, there have been multiple planning commissioners serving on that commission that have come to us and said, hey, I don't think I'm doing any good here. I'd like to not do it. I would look at the feedback from the Parking and Traffic Commission, though, before recommending to council that we remove ourselves from that. And if it were an unwillingness, then I would step in and take it over. But I understand that's not the thing, so thank you.
And thank you for that, Linda. My question, getting to that point, has this been brought to the Traffic and Parking Committee to discuss and make us a recommendation?
I don't believe it has. I know we have heard from a couple of members, either through oral discussions or through emails.
Okay, all right, thank you. With that, I'll open it up to members of the public that would like to address the commission on this topic. Good evening, Karen.
Good evening, Karen Hanna. I'm on that commission -- or committee. Excuse me. I think that there has been a lot of frustration on a lot of commissioners' parts because, you know, certain things drag out for a long time, or we'll have some sessions where there's not a lot going on. But it is a pretty dedicated group, and I think that it's -- I think it's important. The few things that we have actually really gotten through with the council, I think, have been important. And I just don't know that it's an appropriate committee to have a youth representative necessarily, parking, traffic, things that they're not very experienced in. And I think there are council appointments, and I think there are at-large, and there's a lot of residents. It's very resident-heavy. So I would personally, if some position were going to be changed to a youth position, I'd rather see it be one of the others because the planning commissioner does bring more expertise. And I believe that at this point, we're only meeting quarterly unless we have something important, we have to meet more often. So it's not a really taxing committee. So, you know, TJ's done a great job, worked really hard on the employee parking and some other projects. And so I'd like to see it stay in the makeup -- I'd like to see the makeup stay the same. Thank you.
Any other member of the public wish to address the commission on this topic? Seeing none, I'm going to bring it back for further discussion and possible action. Anybody would like to speak on this issue? Welcome, Ed.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm late.
Well, I did reach out to Molly. She's a chairperson of the Traffic and Parking Committee, just to see if she was aware of what was going on the agenda. And she was not, so she sent a lengthy note to us. But so I think her stance is that she would prefer to have the planning commissioner. Honestly, I think if the committee's going to stand, then the planning commissioner role in that committee is a significant one because we bring the knowledge of what's going on, parking standards, general plan, all those type of things. So like I said, I apologize if I ever misled that we shouldn't be on that committee. And I apologize for sharing or venting my frustrations with what goes on with the committee. It is a very frustrating committee. And traffic and parking has been a problem in this city since before it was a city, so it's understandable. But I'm willing to stay on the committee. That's not an issue for me, I think, when that first aired out. And I think Rich was trying to bail me out a little bit when this kind of changed. And my understanding is that the youth member is not a voting member. Is that correct? So they'll definitely get their eyes open to city politics and how the city operates. I think it would be fine for them to be there as well.
Any other comments from commissioners? Seeing none, I mean, just to add, I feel that it is an important connection between what the Traffic and Parking Committee does and what the Planning Commission does, and that the Planning Commission should have a representative on that very important commission. And however, if there's any discussions concerning the makeup of the Traffic and Parking Commission, I think that should first go to them and have them discuss how they want to be organized and the number of voting members and whether or not they should have a youth member, which I think it's a great opportunity to introduce youth to city issues. But I think we should hear from them first as the part of their makeup, what they feel they need to be effective, and then that can be brought back here. And I'm not sure frustration should ever be the criteria for determining whether or not we continue to engage in city business. And if the Traffic and Parking Commission and the City Council feel that it's important to have a representative from this body, then it's incumbent upon us to -- among us, and it's not just on you, TJ. I think it's all part of our obligations to fulfill that role. And we certainly, though, appreciate your having done that and willingness to continue. And I think with that, I don't know if that's direction for staff. I don't know if we need to have any further action.
I think that's fine for a report to council. We didn't really hear any interest to separate the Planning Commission from Traffic and Parking.
Great. And that discussion should take place at the Traffic and Parking. Okay, great, thank you. Next, we'll go on to oral communications. And the first item are additions and deletions to the agenda. The commissioners have any requested additions, deletions? Seeing none, staff?
Staff did add in a rata sheet to item number 6A, which will be described more fully during the staff presentation.
Thank you. Next, we'll have public comments on items that are not on tonight's agenda. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the commission on items that are not a part of our agenda. Does anyone like to address the commission? Seeing none, I'm going to close the mic -- open mic, and we'll come back now to commission Are there commissioner comments?
I have a communication that I'm going to save for the end of the meeting.
I just have one comment, and that is this Saturday is the grand opening of the library book sale at the mall location. It's from 10:00 to 4:00 on Saturday, so there will be fun had and great books to buy, so please make note of that on your calendars.
All right. Oh, and just, I am the Planning Commission representative to the Art and Cultural Commission. I just want to announce to everyone, you know, we've had a project to put a new railing out in front of the Bela Roma Restaurant and also in front of the office that I rent space in. And that railing is complete, and it will actually be going up here, I'd say, fairly soon. And so everybody look for that, and hopefully, everybody will be quite impressed. It's very well-done and attractive railing with all kinds of nautical themes in it, so look out for that. Next, we'll go to staff comments?
Staff has no comments.
All right, we're moving on. Then we'll go to approval of the minutes. Let's do them. We have two minutes, sets of minutes. The first is the regular meeting of January 18th, 2018, and the regular meeting of February 1st, 2018. Does any commissioners have any changes to the minutes?
I'll move approval of the January 18th minutes.
Second?
Okay, so we have approval of item 4-1, number one, which is the January 18th minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have the regular meeting of February 1st, 2018.
I'll move February 1st adoption of the minutes.
As a motion, is there a second?
Commissioner Story, I have to recuse myself because I was not present at that meeting.
So I was not present either.
Well, there you go.
Continue.
So I was at the Scotts Valley Planning Commission meeting when the city attorney opined that if you're not present at the meeting, you can still vote on the minutes if one of the other commissioners represents to you that the minutes are an accurate representation of what happened at the meeting, but it has to be a credible member.
Somebody was there. So, well, we're going trying to meet that standard. I'll second the motion, and so all in --
I'll vote in favor of it.
Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Well, I'll buy into his saying vote aye.
All right, so we have -- the motion passes unanimously. So now we'll move on to the consent calendar for this evening. We have one item, which is a project at 409 Pilgrim Drive. And it's an application for a design permit for a single-family home, which includes a detached secondary dwelling unit at that address within the R1 Single Family Zoning District. The project is in the coastal zone and requires a coastal development permit that is not appealable. It is categorically exempt from the environmental determinations. And with that, we have a staff report?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to have to recuse myself from this item because the applicant is my landlord, so I'll take a walk to the back of the room until you finish your deliberations.
All right, thank you.
Since it's on consent, do we really have to have a whole?
It's only consent calendars, isn't it?
Right. Yeah, I was just waiting for somebody to make a motion, or, I mean, does anybody wish to pull this item?
I don't wish to pull the item. I did review with staff an additional condition that I'd like to have included, and that is simply to state that it is a 30-day minimum rental, the ADU.
Okay, we'll pick that up. Does anyone member of the audience wish to pull this item for further discussion? Seeing none, so we have a request to add a condition, limiting short-term rentals to 30 days. Any objections or any commissioners wish to pull these items for further discuss that can add-on? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve or however you want to proceed.
Is that condition acceptable to the applicant? Seeing nodding, affirmative nodding there.
I'll move approval of the consent calendar with this item.
Second?
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. You're welcome. Next, we have the one public hearing this evening. Yes, we'll wait till Rich comes back. A public hearing this evening is for a design permit, a conditional use permit, a coastal development permit for, in addition to, a historic single-family residence with a detached garage in the R1A1 Single Family Zoning District. The address is 1810 Worf Road. The proposal includes a variance for height of the water tower, the front yard setback of the detached garage, reduction of onsite parking, and exceeding the maximum value of a non-conforming structure. This project requires a coastal development permit, which is appealable to the Coastal Commission after all possible appeals are exhausted to the city. The environmental determination is categorically exempt. With that, may we have a staff report?
Okay, good evening, commissioners. Before you is an application for 1810 Worf Road. I presented this application to you originally in January, and during the January meeting, we went through the design. And there are four variances attached to this application. At that January hearing, we asked for direction on the variances. And specifically, there originally was a two-story detached garage. Since you've last reviewed it, the second story and the secondary dwelling unit that was in the second story has been removed from the application. There was also a fourth parking space along the southern property edge that created a new access off of Worf Road that the Planning Commission also requested the applicant consider removing that space to not impact on street parking. So with that, I'll jump into my presentation. I'm not going to go over all the details of the proposal in terms of the design, but really the site layout and get into the variance, and I'm happy to answer any questions. But I think the first time we went through this, we visited the architectural historian's feedback on the design, and it seemed like there was positive momentum there, but for these major items to be tweaked when it came back to Planning Commission. So with that, this is the updated proposal, and as you can see, there's now a one-story detached garage. And the proposal with the historic home and the third-story water tower, that the applicant's requesting a variance for the height to the water tower. And these are the side elevations to the project. The applicant did a nice job of preserving the historic structure and then setting the addition behind the historic structure and detaching the new garage from the historic structure. So this is the view from the back, as seen from the river, looking across. And then this is the detached garage. So as you can see, it's now a one-story detached garage. The height is 14 feet 2 inches. In it would fit a tandem parking at 46 feet in depth. So the variances that are requested for this project, one is for a reduction to the onsite parking, also the setback requirement for the detached garage, the height of the water tower, and also the non-conforming calculation, the maximum of 80%. So first, I'll start with the parking. The project is over 4,001 square feet, so one covered parking space is required and three uncovered. When you last saw this project, this was the parking configuration with one site, as I previously mentioned, on the south end of the lot. The applicant has since updated the application to include three parking spaces, and they're asking for a variance to the fourth required uncovered parking space that's required on the site. They're also asking for a variance to the setback. So a detached garage is required to be set back 40 feet from the front property line, and they're requesting that the variance -- that a variance be allowed to allow it at 18 feet from the property line. There, when reviewing a variance, the Planning Commission looks to see if there are special circumstances that are applicable to the property that the strict interpretation of the code is found to deprive the property of privileges enjoyed by others in the vicinity and under the exact same zoning. And there are definitely special circumstances tied to this lot. It's extremely steep from the back of the lot. From the back of the home, the elevation is at 80 feet above sea level, so the steep slope extends down to the Soquel Creek, 80 feet. There's also a 35-foot riparian corridor setback that's required in this area of environmentally sensitive habitat. And then, third, there's a well-established tree right near the entrance that the applicant originally was looking to maybe turn around the tree, make a hard right, and be able to fit one more space. But between pushing the garage forward, they're not able to make that turning radius. And also, they've taken into consideration in the placement of the garage, the neighbor's view, to kind of not push the building as far back as it could with the proposed retaining wall that would be behind that. Also, when considering a variance, the Planning Commission looks to make sure that they're not granting a special privilege that's inconsistent with the limits -- limitations upon other properties in the vicinity. And as shown in this slide, the outlines of the buildings of the properties to the north are all enjoying a privilege of being set closer to the front property line. And so by allowing the front yard setback, it would not be seen as a special privilege. It's something that's enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity. Two other items that are requested for variance is the height of the water tower, up to 31 feet. The zone height is 25 feet, but there's an exception for historic additions to a historic structure that are consistent with the design of the historic building, can go up to 27 feet. And there's also a request to exceed the 80% of the non-conforming calculation. So although there aren't special circumstances tied to the property for this, there are special circumstances that can be considered. This is throughout the historic report. It's been found to be possibly the oldest structure in Capitola. To not exceed the 80% limit, the structure, if an applicant wants to exceed the 80% limit, a structure must remain in the location that it -- well, sorry. So to exceed the 80% limit, the structure must be brought into conformance. So to do so, the historic home would have to be picked up and moved one foot. This is not seen as best practices within historic preservation. Best practices would be to keep the historic structure where it has historically been sited. And then also, in looking at historic preservation and bringing back a historic feature that is supported within historic preservation, so by bringing back the water tower, and this is based on historic images, by bringing back that historic feature, that is in line with historic preservation. So there have been similar variances that have been granted. Similar allowances have been for the 80% -- to exceed the 80% maximum have been granted at 124 Central and 109 in Central in the recent past. Also, the water tower at the Lent House at 1570 Prospect was allowed to exceed -- was given a variance to a height of 28 feet 2 inches, so similar to this application. Next, there's also a request for a fence height exception in the front yard. So our front yard maximum height is 3 feet 6 inches. The existing front yard ranges from 5 feet -- the fence in the front yard reaches from 5 feet 10 inches to 6 feet 8 inches. They're proposing a 6-foot-tall solid fence with some lattice. So here's an existing image. As you can see, it's a hodgepodge of different fencing that's been placed there over the years, and therefore, the range of fence heights. In surveying the neighboring properties, the property directly to the north is in compliance. It does not exceed the fence height. But beyond that, as you move north, the fence, the front fence heights are listed in this aerial image, and they range from 5 feet 5 inches to 7 feet 2 inches in height, all well above the 3 and 1/2 feet that's allowed by code. And the property to the south also exceeds the allowed fence height. On February 26th, you received an email from a neighboring resident that raised concerns for archaeological monitoring during excavation of the site. The project site is located within the city's Archaeological Resource Overlay Zoning District, and therefore, activities associated with the property may have a significant effect on cultural resources. So staff, we posted the new errata that came out today that recommends additional conditions of approval to add mitigation measures consistent with the General Plan EIR and to mitigate possible impacts to cultural resources. So within the errata, we've outlined additional conditions, and we'll -- we also suggest modifying the SEQA exemption that was in the staff report to the newly proposed SEQA exemption so that this falls under the General Plan Update EIR. So with that, staff is recommending approval of Application 170381 with the added conditions that are provided in the errata and the modification of the SEQA exemption to 15183. And I am available for questions.
Just, I'd like to lead with the staff recommendation. Does that include approving the variances?
It does.
Okay. Just to clarify. Other commissioners have questions at this time for the -- on the staff report?
So could you just clarify for me the parking requirement? Because I'm looking at the plans here, and it shows the floor area total is 3,944, which would be under the 4,000.
Is it under the 4,000? I believe that above, it's still 4. Once -- sorry about that, so --
What'd you put up there, said 4,001?
4,001. At 4,001 and beyond, the Planning Commission can require more than the four parking spaces, so.
What's the threshold from 3 to 4? Is that like 2,500 or something like that?
I want to say 26. So sorry, so from 2,601 to 4,000, four spaces are required.
Okay. Thank you.
And just a point of clarification. The request for variance on the water tower also includes a difference on the height of the addition to the main house from what should normally be 25 to 25 feet 9 inches. And the reason that you're not calling that variance is because it's a historic structure, even though the increase is on a new addition to that structure.
So in addition to a historic structure, as long as it complements the historic, it can be up to 27 feet. historic, can be up to twenty-seven feet, and it's not, it doesn't require a variance?
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners?
I have some questions. One concerning the eighty percent of value, fair market value. I was just curious as to how the calculations in the staff report were prepared. I mean, because it seems to be on a cost basis, based on the cost of constructing the existing structures at today's prices, two hundred a square foot? And in our zoning code, refers to fair market value? And to me, there's always the distinction between cost and fair market value. Is, I mean, is that a significant difference? Is that supportable? That a method of using the cost to construct to determine and making it equivalent to fair market value?
Mr. Chairman, the city's longstanding practice has been to use a building valuation that was determined by the building official, and we use the standard of two hundred dollars per square foot for new construction and a hundred dollars per square foot for remodels. I think the challenge of using fair market value is you often don't know it at this stage of a project. We also assess our building fees the same way, based on valuation, and there are times when a applicant will come in after they've got bids, and they'll show it to us, and they'll say, "Well, your valuation is too high. This is what the job's really going to cost." And then we adjust it down accordingly. So it'd be difficult to use that method at this stage of the process, if that makes sense.
Well, during your process with them, did they make any comments about how the fair market value of the existing structures were determined? I mean, what we have is four-hundred-thirty-four thousand, one-fifty. Now, and I'm not, I'm not an expert in that business, but my experience, that seems rather low, extremely low. So, did the applicants raise that point with you?
No, they haven't, and we rarely get any comments about that until we get to the building phase. Typically, it's for people to think that the valuation is too high. My understanding from talking to more, you know, building official, both in Capitola and otherwise, is it really depends on the types of finishes you're using, the type of construction that makes it vary widely. Sometimes it can be significantly below two hundred, and if you're doing a really high-quality, refined project, you could go way above it.
Right, okay.
So it's kind of more of an art than a science.
And, okay, thank you for that response. My other question is, you showed, on the question of the fence height, and maybe the applicant later could explain the reasoning for the six-foot fence. I mean, I have a sense, but I'd like to hear it from the applicant. But when you did the surrounding properties and saw equivalent fences, did you, do you know whether those, how those came about? Were those granted through variances, or were those just grandfathered in from, you know, ages ago?
I do know that an exception was granted, I want to say about two years ago, along Wharf Road for a fence that was taller, but I did not go through the individual files.
Yeah, it was on the other side of Wharf Road, and it was because the car lights went right into their house.
Okay.
There was another one, an additional one as well, on the east side of Wharf Road that was granted a variance more recently.
Okay. Because my view, I mean, when I was looking at, you know, when the properties across the street from this property, you know, it's, they are void of hardly any fences, okay? And certainly not fences that exceed the zoning limits, three foot, six inches, and so. Okay, that, I mean, I, that was, I mean, I was, that's relevant to me in trying to make this determination of whether or not this variance should be granted.
One additional point is, we did have a discussion during the zoning code update about fence heights, specifically to Wharf Road, because we felt that it was one area of town where, you know, the existing form is that a lot of those homes have higher fences, the houses are close to Wharf Road, which gets a lot of traffic, and the planning commission decided that going forward, it's not into effect today, that that would be an area appropriate for over-height fences, just for your context and when you're making your decision.
One final question concerning the variance on parking. Did staff, did you discuss with them developing parking on the right side of that cedar tree at the entrance to the parking lot? I can see maybe, yeah, that you can't make that turn in, but that turn is necessitated by a six-foot fence, and so that fence is not there. Do you have space to put in another uncovered parking?
To the right of the tree there?
Yeah, but not that tree. It would be, there's another tree, which I understand is what's kind of in the way here, at the, right at the driveway. You can't, I don't think you can see it from this vantage point.
So we, we did discuss alternative layouts, and in the staff report, I note that, you know, they're only required to-
Yes, yeah, you can see that, yeah.
We did not discuss parking to the side of that, but I think there was clear direction from planning commission not to remove any more of the street parking, so to do-
Right, and I'm not, I'm not talking about street parking.
Okay.
Because if you opened up that fence, I mean, it appears from just the drawings that you could fit in an uncovered, uncovered space that's equivalent to the current uncovered space with the garage sitting where it is up front, okay? I mean, and, I mean, that's just from the view, and so I just want to, to see if there was any discussions that you guys may have had with the applicant that impeded that as a solution to the fourth onsite parking space.
There, I know there is a desire from the applicant to have that courtyard space that's between the garage and the new single family. So I think that's influencing it as well.
Yes.
But I, I think we should refer to the designer.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
With that, those are my questions. Thank you, staff, for responding to them. I think at this time, I'll open it up to the public for discussion and the applicant to respond, and, but I would like to order this when we come back and maybe speak to each variance that is being requested. And so maybe you could, we could present those one at a time, starting with the water tower height, the second is the parking, third, the garage setback, and fourth, the fence height. With that, the members of the public, that they would like to address the commission on this item?
Chairman, commissioners, my name is Derek Van Alstine. I'm the designer of this project. We spent quite a, quite a bit of time reorganizing this, this set of plans and working with staff, and staff's been great to work with, and I'd like to thank them for the job that they've done. I think each and every piece of this project relies on the position and the, and the historical nature of the house. So what happens is, if you read the historic report, the, there's great emphasis put on not obscuring the view of especially the street side of the house from anywhere. So anything that we add, we had to add in back of the house, on the, on the creek side, and then we had to move, not attach anything to the house, but move it off to the side so that we don't obscure the, the historic nature of the house. So a lot of emphasis was put on how do we do that and, and make the house usable, make it work for my client, the Strocks? And how do we satisfy the neighborhood concerns? To speak to the fence issue, the, I think a lot of the houses on this side of the streets have fences because of the amount of traffic and the amount of foot traffic, so that they can have privacy. When people are going to the Shadow Brook, there tends to be a lot of foot traffic, and there's a lot of parking, a lot of cars circling around the parking lots. The higher fence gives them the ability to have some privacy where, where a lower fence would not. The, the tree, the tree is an interesting issue. As far as the, the fourth parking space goes, we tried to do that by putting the space over at the other side, and obviously, that wasn't the great solution. But the, the tree really makes it difficult to use any other space and get a, and get a fourth space in. So that's why we're asking for a variance. It really all comes back to the historic nature and the, and the fact that we can't, we don't have any place to, to put anything else. We're, we're, we've got the hill in the back, the steep slope, the house is where it is, and the front yard is where it is, and the parking on the street is where it is, so there are very, very few movable pieces here with which to play to create that fourth space. So if you moved that, if you provided another entrance, you're going to lose the space on the street, and you will be back in the same boat that we were in originally. The, I think we, I hope we've addressed the issue of the, of the height adequately. We were able to take, and I think you have it in your package, you have the photo which we blew up. There's a piece of the existing house that's, that shows in that photograph, and so we're able to document what the height of the rear porch at the time this photo was taken. We know, we know that, that, we know what the, what the measurement is of that porch wall, and thereby, we're able to figure out where the eve was at the top of the water tower. We also know that if you have a water tower, those tanks were six feet tall, and, and the, the beams that hold the tank up take quite a bit of space, as does the roof structure. So when you, when you take a six-foot tank and you get a seven-foot roof line and then you, excuse me, an eve line, so the top of the wall, and place the roof on top of that, this is what you get. I mean, so I think it's a fairly accurate, it's as accurate as we could possibly get it. And I think it's, it's a, it makes a huge difference in the historical context. That, that house originally had the tower next to it, it's, it's really nice to see it back. And that's borne out by the historic report that made specific reference to, to the historical nature of the, of the water tower, and that it would be nice to be able to recreate it.
I don't know that I have a whole lot more to add. I would urge you to approve this. We're fine with all of the conditions, including the errata from today as an addition, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Commissioners have questions for-
One question. How do you get from twenty-four feet to thirty-one feet?
Well, you're, what you're looking at there is, at the bottom of that post that you see on the left of this, of this picture, is the floor line of the existing house. When you get over to the water tower, the land drops away. So the measurement that you see is, is from the floor down up to the top of the water tower, not just from that floor line up. So you're going both down and up when you get over to the water tower. The land slopes away towards, towards the creek.
But the measurement that's showing on the picture is twenty-four feet, and it looks like it's at the bottom of the water tower and the top of the water tower?
No, it's actually, it's actually at the floor line, and the floor line is like three-and-a-half feet above where the ground, where the water tower hits the ground. So that's what you're not seeing in this picture, and that's why it's important to, to realize where this, where these lines were projected from. They're a known point, but you go both up and down from that point. So what we've got is, and that's not the top of the roof, that's, that's to the top of the wall of the water tower. So you're looking at, the twenty-four feet is, is from the existing floor to the, to the top of the wall of the water tower, and you're adding the roof line on top of that and adding the, the distance from the floor down to the ground.
Any other questions, any commissioners?
I did.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, one of the neighbors sent us an email, and he raised an issue about drainage in the front of the property, and I'm looking at the grading and drainage plan, maybe this is outside your scope, I don't know, but, because it was done by Hogan. Can you tell me what's going on there and how that's being addressed?
Well, I don't know that it's specifically been addressed yet, as of yet. I, I assume that Mr. Strokel have no problem addressing it. I don't think anybody wants to have puddles out there. So it'll, it'll be, it'll be a chore to work with Public Works to figure out what-
Are there going to be curbs and sidewalk put in there?
They're not required to have curb and sidewalk in this area. So the drainage onsite has to be approved prior to building permit by our Public Works, but for the street drainage improvements, curb and gutter is not required.
Plan doesn't really show any things. Okay.
Additional question.
Go ahead, yes.
Has, has the applicant considered voluntarily putting in sidewalks and curbs?
No, not as of yet.
Okay.
And nor do I, nor do I think it would be appropriate. It would be the only parcel that has, on, going south, the only parcel that has curb, gutter, and sidewalk. And it would, it would change the nature of the street, I think, to do so. As far as the drainage is concerned, I'm, I'm sure that we'll be willing to look at that and see what we can do to take care of it.
Other question that I had, it was really clear on the, the plan that you put up. Where there was another entrance, it looks like now there's stairs coming out onto the street, which seems to me that it might do the same thing as having a driveway there and prevent a parking space. Did I see that correctly? If you go back to your, the, the overview plan there, where the, the stairs are that look like they come out from the front?
That's just a little pergola, that's a little roof covering over the entry gate.
And the entry gate is in the same existing place it is now?
Close to it. I don't know that it's exactly the same.
Derek, I, I do have one question. It has to do with the, the parking, and could you go back to that view of the street view of the? Right in between the, where the fence currently ends today before you go into, turn in the driveway in that oak tree, there's a little bit of an opening there. Yeah, I think it was the next, it was, it was the other picture that showed the Mustang and a pickup, but, yeah, there you go. Okay, keep turning around a little bit more to your right, there you go, going north. So the front of that pickup is basically even with the tree, and is also like the, even with the driveway. But if you turned in that driveway, in between the tree and where the fence is, if that opening was a little wider, did you look at having a parking spot there that they could turn in and, and come to the right side of the tree in between the fence? And that way, it wouldn't take away the parking spot. Now, if you, if you did make a whole new driveway going in to the right side of the tree, it would eliminate where the white pickup is now, but there is, it looks like a little bit of room between where the tree stands and where the fence line ties into it to pull to the right to put a parking pad.
If you're talking about driving around the tree and-
No, it's not, it's, it would be on the west side of the tree.
Yeah, any, any solution that you, that we were able to- Yeah, any, any solution that you, that we were able to devise required a removal of one space from the street unless we went around the tree and there's not room to get enough, not enough room to get around the tree to park parallel to the street.
Okay.
How many actual spaces are there in front of that fence?
I'm not sure.
Well, I mean, we see two cars parked there and it appeared though that if that were more manageable and marked, that still two cars could park there. So, if we're looking at, well, it has three on-street parking, could that still be preserved even though you were to cut another driveway to the right of that tree?
We could measure it and.
Well, the other.
So, it's possible, I mean, that's.
It may be possible.
The other thing to consider is usually there's a bit of red curb between, you know, either side of a driveway. I don't know if there'd be curbs here, but still you want a little bit of separation to pull in and out of a driveway. So, you know, I really don't know how it'd affect it, but it seems like it would likely displace a spot.
Point of clarification, the gate that we're looking at here is for the neighboring property, is that true?
That gate is for the property we're speaking of.
That, the gate that you're looking at there?
Yep.
With the little car.
Part of 1810 Wharf.
Okay.
If you give me just a second, I could probably.
Oh, sure.
Although there might be slightly more than two spaces, there's, there's not two and a half spaces, which is what it would take to get an extra, to get an extra entrance in there. And it would be awfully tight. I mean, we looked, we pretty much looked at all these combinations. We racked our heads for days trying to figure out other ways to do it and to get it all to work nicely. And I think this is the solution that we've come up with, I think, is the best for this property and for the neighborhood that leaves these three spaces usable.
And the applicant hasn't considered having a single car garage with all the parking onsite that they need? Because that would be another way to do it if you had a single car garage, you could get spaces in front of it.
We did. We've gone now from having four spaces and an ADU down to having a single-story garage and, and we're fine with that. But I think we've, he's, we've made a lot of concessions in order to make this work as well as it could possibly work. And he really would like to have that much covered space and we can't connect it to the house and we can't, we don't have any other place to put it except where we've shown it in the plans.
Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none from commissioners. Do any other members of the public wish to address the commission on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to bring it back to the commission for further discussion and action. Is there a commissioner that would like to start us out?
So, the project itself, I'm going to take a wild guess everybody likes and what we're really talking about are these four variances. So, I think I liked your suggestion of kind of dealing with them one at a time.
Okay. Yes, why don't we do that and let's start, is that agreeable to the other commissioners?
Absolutely, yes.
Why don't we start with the water tower height and have some discussion and there, is there?
I'll jump in on that one. I appreciate the historic nature in restoring the water tower, but I have a real concern with how tall it's going to be and how tall it's going to seem. I live across the street from the Lent House up on Prospect and the water tower there was in existence when they granted the variance for the height. So, they were granting a variance to an existing height and restoration of a water tower. This water tower has not been there for a long, long time. And the estimation of the 31 feet, I think, is just that, it's an estimation. I don't know if you could do the same thing at 28 feet as you can do at 31 feet, but I think the people down on River View are going to look up and it's going to be really, really tall. When I look at the drawings, it seems out of proportion with the rest of the structures. So, I have a hard time with the 31 feet.
TJ?
Yeah, I'll jump in. Actually, I think it is, is fine at the 31 feet, whatever that height happens to be. I think this is like the perfect place for it. Standing on River View, you really don't see the height discrepancy because you're at such an angle, it's so steep. It doesn't obstruct really any views from the neighbors. And this is, if we're being told correctly, that it's the oldest home in Capitola, I think it's great that we go back to that original view that we saw from the photo. The only concern, it's interesting because we listened to Derek say that the concern is not to do anything on the front so it doesn't obstruct the view, but we're going to put a six-foot fence. And I understand the concern about privacy, it would be great to be able to see the oldest house in Capitola from, from the street. And unlike some of these other houses on Wharf Road where it's, I know I'm jumping into another variance already, but it defines my reasoning. I think it'd be great to be able to see that. The other houses on Wharf Road that we had this discussion when we wrote our zoning really are those ones that the garage or the house is right on the street. This one does have some setback, but I think the, getting this water tower back to its original design is going to be the, really the key part of the whole structure.
So, I too think that both the location where it is and the nature of the building militate in favor of this variance. We had the building that's on Stockton right down in the village there that went over height and it was a different issue because it wasn't a variance, it was an exception, but it was argued at that time that the uniqueness of that building and the charm of it was important. And I think there's sort of a similar argument here that, that I don't see it as a negative having it in that location and having that kind of a building, that's going to be very interesting to look at.
And on the height issue, I support the variance on the water tower. I mean, just because of the historical nature and I'm, with the evidence that was presented, I think there's sufficient evidence in the record to justify it being at that height. And I do recall, yeah, the Lighthouse property, it was also a height exception, different location, but I think that turned out to be a good project. And so, I think for those reasons, I'm willing to accept the variance to the water tower height. So, maybe we'll bookmark that. We seem to have general agreement on that, but I know that things could shift as we go through each of the items. Before we get, maybe I'd like to take the, the setback, the garage setback, you know, to 18, well, they're proposing 18 feet instead of 40. And maybe we could have some discussions and people's senses on that issue.
I'll be first on that one. I mean, thinking of the Kissling House next door when we granted variances on that, this is, the uniqueness of the topography in this location makes it necessary to have a setback variance, in my opinion.
Anyone else?
I would concur with Commissioner Newman that the uniqueness and I think they've taken into account trying to not block the view from the neighbor as well. So, for me, I don't have an issue with that.
I don't have a problem with the setback.
Yes. Yeah, I'm in agreement with the other commissioners. That, that variance is satisfactory to me because of the topography of the property there. So, we'll move on to, let's deal with the 80% non-conforming calculation.
I'll jump in there again, this is, this is one of those things that we come across on every one of these historical houses and I don't have an issue with that exception of the, that variance. I will tell you, I agree that the calculations, $200 square foot is, is pretty low in that process, but I think with these historical homes, what we're seeing is, the last couple we've actually been involved with doing a remodel, they've done an outstanding job of keeping the house, the historic components and the perspective that we would have from that while being able to have a home that they could live in. So, I think that's one of the reasons we looked at changing this, this part of our code and the, and the new upcoming code that says 80% is really difficult to evaluate.
Anyone else?
I agree. We scrapped that 80% in the code because it is so difficult and I support the variance.
Yeah. And I support the variances, that particular one, I mean, just, one, I do have some questions about the calculations and how they're arrived. The zoning code does say fair market value. I'm not sure if we've hit that mark, but that may be a moot point. I mean, for me though, it is one of the reasons why I would support it. And the consequences though, for historic structure would be, you know, very expensive and for very short distance that they would have to go in order to come into compliance. For all those reasons, then I would support that variance. We actually have five variances.
What happened to the fence?
Yeah, well, no, I have it on my list.
The fence is not a variance. It's in the code, it's listed as an exception that the planning commission can grant. So, you don't need variance findings for the fence, it's just an exception.
But we can still discuss it, right?
What's, what's the distinction between an exception and a variance?
There's no standards for review. So, the planning commission, you can, under the fence standards, it says the, the planning commission can grant an exception to the height standards and materials for fences and location.
Variance is a state law.
Right, uh-huh, right, okay. So, well, with that, why don't we move on to the fence exception then? Anybody like to start on that?
Yeah, I'm going to agree with, we've already heard a little bit from my fellow commissioner there and I agree with that. I mean, we've, we've discussed on various applications, the Wharf Road and Prospect fences which create fortresses and the pros and cons of that, that location. The con of it is, is that the people who don't live in those houses like to either see the ocean or see historical buildings with water towers and putting up a six-foot fence for those of us who aren't six-foot tall. I see the planning, that includes the planning director.
Absolutely.
You know, it's kind of, I think the historic nature of this property cuts the other direction on this one. It says we ought to be able to see it. And so, I'm not really inclined toward that exception.
I would agree. I would be open to maybe a section of the fence that will allow some privacy, but I would ask the question, with that backyard, the view you have in that backyard, why, why do you want to be in the front anyway? So, if it came down to some privacy area for the front, I could, I could understand that, but I think it, I think it'd be nice to be able to see this house. I think this is a, you know, a great opportunity for the city of Capitola to share its most historical house in the city, so.
I completely agree with both those and I do believe that I was part of a project up Wharf Road that had an exception on the fence and it's because the sidewalk ran right in front of their house and there wasn't three or four feet and that is a real privacy issue. But this is going to be set back, there's going to be a beautiful courtyard in front of it. If the fence were that tall, I would like to see it open like a wrought iron fence that, that is fully visible, not a solid fence that creates, there you go, creates kind of that fortress feeling. I know that was a big issue across the street from us and it's really appreciated that it's, it's three feet tall.
And I'll just say, I concur with my fellow commissioners about the, not allowing the exception to the fence height. I think, one, it's not, it's not on Wharf Road, it's close to Wharf Road, it has the setbacks. A lot of the, all the properties across the street, much of the rest of the neighborhood does not have that look and feel of these fortress fences. And I think that if we allowed that in every street, every resident street that had a lot of traffic, we would just have a proliferation of fortress fences, you know, creating more separation and visual, you know, blocks. So, for those reasons, I do not agree with granting the exception to the fence height. So, now which brings us to the reduced parking. Who would like to start on that issue? And that is a variance.
So, I'm, I'm going to jump in and say, I cannot see reducing the parking requirement because of the location, because of the, the amount of land that is there that can be used if things were designed differently. I understand the, the design is beautiful the way it is, but there's a large portion of landscaping in front and I just can't quite fathom that there's not a way to get an entrance in to get another car on there. The library is close, it's going to be going under construction, there's going to be people that have no place to park a lot and there's so much construction already going on, I see it being a madhouse with people trying to vie for spaces. And if, if these guys park in front of their front gate, then there are fewer places on the street and fewer places inside and I just see that as a problem.
Anyone else?
Commissioner Newman's looking at me like it's your turn, so I'll jump in here. I agree, this is the one issue that I have with the variances on this house is just the parking. There's, seems like there may be a method and looking at the, the front of the house where they showed the Mustang and the, the white car parked in tandem, maybe if we had, you know, something that was like a parallel, kind of an angled parking, you may be able to fit three cars in there. Or, from my view, I'm looking at on Google, Google Earth, it almost looks like you could put one between the front of the property line where the white pickup was parked and the other side of the tree as you go in at a diagonal. So, it seems to me we could come up with, or the applicant could come up with some type of solution. Derek's saying like, no way, he's not going to do it, but that's my one concern is I, I don't know that I could approve a variance for the parking.
So, I know the applicant wants to respond to this, but let me chip in here that, I'm troubled by this, this is the only one of the variances, I was troubled by it and I'm just not convinced. I have a lot of respect for the applicant and for his representative and I just don't think they've put their minds fully to this problem yet. And the creativity, I just think there's a solution to this other than a variance. And I'm not sure what it is, but they haven't persuaded me that this is, that they've exhausted the possibilities.
And let me speak in and then I'll open it up to you once more, Derek. And, and yeah, I just want, I guess, to emphasize that, you know, parking is such an issue in this community and it is something that I think that we need to be more focused and diligent about. It has been a proverbial issue for decades, but, and some of the solutions are very difficult, but the one thing that we can do is to make sure that projects abide by our parking standards. And that's why, which, that's not to say that you don't ever grant a variance, but I need, I need to be fully convinced that every possible consideration has been given in the design and in the layout to address. has been given in the design and in the layout to address that issue, and I'm just not fully convinced, sitting here tonight, that that's been done, and so I think for those reasons, I would be inclined to, as long as with the other commissioners, to deny the variance for the reduced onsite parking, and, and I think that it would just, you know, go back to the applicant, I know the staff had made a recommendation, but I think it's up to the applicant to determine how they're going to address that issue, and so with that, I'll open it up, the mic to you for a few more minutes.
I think there may be a solution at hand here, if, if we were allowed to remove the two-foot planting strip along the fence, we could get two parking spaces that were eight and a half by 18, which is admittedly tight, but workable, they're Capitola-sized spaces, so that's entirely possible, we could, we could snuggle up to the fence if we didn't have to do the two-foot planting strip and get two spaces in front of the garage.
So could you, I mean, could you show us, then, where the two-foot, two-foot planting space that's being referred to?
Yeah, we have.
On the side there?
Right, right along the, the first 18 feet of the fence has a two-foot, a required two-foot planting strip, so if that were removed, we, we would be able to do two smaller spaces, but two spaces nevertheless, and in actuality, once you get past the tree, there's, there's more room on the inside, so if.
What's the measurement from the property line to the tree?
Seventeen and a half feet.
And eight and three quarters.
Yeah.
But you do have some, once you get to that tree, while you would not be able to make a complete right turn, you would be able to pull over to the right to create room for two cars parked side by side.
In front of the garage, right?
Yeah, yeah, in fact, it would work, and, you know, most cars these days are around 15 and a half feet, so there, there's a little wiggle room here that, you know, parking spaces in most jurisdictions were based on, on measurements of cars from the 60s, 70s, and 80s, they're a lot larger than the cars that we drive today, a standard sedan is about 15 and a half feet, so would it work? Yes, it would work.
I would ask.
May I chime in?
Yes.
So the detached garage, so, so absolutely, there is a two-foot setback requirement that must be landscaped from that fence into the property, so that, we have, in the past, there have been variances, I think in the jewel box, there was one recently for that requirement, so that is one option to get that with, also, the proposed detached garage is currently proposed, it's 46 feet deep, our parking requirement is 10 by 20, so I think there's also possibly some wiggle room in the depth of that building to pull it back further from the street so that there's a little more room to turn two cars in and make it more user-friendly in terms of not, you know, being able to turn the car a little once you get past the tree, we did work with the applicant, there's, it's mentioned in the staff report that there is a way to accommodate the parking onsite by creating just a single car garage and further setting it back, because it, it could meet the 40-foot setback and still have a 26-foot deep garage for a single car with three parking spaces in front, so there is a way to make it work, but I think if, like, considering, if you want to allow a two-car tandem garage that's covered but require it to be pushed back an additional five feet, they could still comply with the interior spaces, and then also looking at removing the landscape requirement on the side, so either option.
If I could say, what I'm hearing is that we don't need to push the garage back, that we can get, if we.
It's 46 feet deep, so it could be set five feet back and still comply with the standards for.
By reducing the length of the, yeah, and what is, what's the applicant's?
My take on it is if we move it back two feet, we're probably gaining enough to make that work nicely.
Cut two feet off of it, or?
Yeah, so, yeah, cut two feet off the length of the garage and omit the planting strip to the left, and I, and I think then we, we have a workable solution.
Okay, sounds like there are solutions to that issue, thank you, do we need to consider any variances to remove that two-foot planting strip?
I would suggest adding that allowance to the two-foot planting strip in order to accommodate the two parking spaces.
Right, but then, but that would only be up to the front of the garage, correct?
On the side.
Okay.
So are we okay with publication of the variance?
I, I have some concerns about issuing variances that weren't noticed, I think if we're gonna issue variances, development standards we haven't considered, we'd need to come back.
Is that a variant, that's what I was asking, would that require variance? Oh, it, okay, okay.
I think if, if it's the commission's desire, we could, you know, under two approaches, you could send staff back to work with the applicant to develop a compliant parking arrangement that doesn't require this variance, alternatively, you could ask for it to come back so that you could see what that arrangement is before it's approved.
May I ask you a question? Is hard landscaping allowed in the two-foot landscaping strip?
Such as pavers, or?
Such as pavers, or, there's a lot of different kind of hardscape that is considered hard landscaping.
Yeah, I, I think it would be okay if it was sort of the turf block that allows some vegetation to grow in between, I think we've allowed, you know, landscaped rocks and mulch and other things, so we can be a little bit creative with that, and I know we've also allowed in some situations for the parking to drive on top of the landscape strip and those types of scenarios.
That's kind of what I'm suggesting.
Did that on central?
We've done that.
It would avoid the need for a new variance, I mean, it would send them back to another meeting.
Well, I'm comfortable with staff working something out of solution if, if you think you can.
And I'm comfortable with making the garage shorter, I'm not comfortable with moving the garage back, so if the wording can really clearly, you're not gonna move the garage back, you're just gonna make it shorter.
And I think it would be good to have specificity in, is there a level of, can the sizes of the spaces be decreased to nine by 18, I mean, actually, nine by 18 is allowed for the uncovered parking spaces in this scenario, because it's a parking exempt, sidewalk exempt area, but the internal garage spaces should be 10 by 20, so, I think, as long as.
Okay, so.
They will be 10 by 20.
On the interior, so it's just, I think we're good.
So I, so just, let me just summarize what it, I think where we are is that it sounds like that, that the onsite parking can be accomplished with hard landscaping, therefore, we don't have to rule on a variance that was not noticed, so on that basis, we can, and on that condition, we can approve this project tonight, however, if there are any issues that come up, then I would say it needs to be, and including any additional variances, it will need to be renoticed and, and resubmitted to the planning commission.
And with that discussion, I would yield on the height issue to the other commissioners and the historic nature of this, and move approval of this project with the changes to the parking, granting of the height variance, the 80% maximum change, and the setback, and not yielding an exception on the fence height.
Denying the variance on the parking.
Denying the variance on the parking, but then otherwise approving the project, and so.
I can second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, does everybody understand the motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously, thank you, everyone, good evening, good work, thank you, staff, so we'll move on to our next public hearing item, which is a general plan cleanup discussion, staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this item tonight is informational, just to seek direction from the planning commission, as you're aware, we recently updated our zoning code, and going back to 2014, we updated our general plan, and at that time, I mentioned that it was gonna be really important for the city to do regular maintenance on its general plan to keep it consistent with state and federal law and reflect any changes that we experience here in the city, so tonight, we're before you to propose some amendments, and we're seeking your direction on the staff proposed changes, and then asking if there's any additional revisions that you've observed over the last couple of years that you think we should take a look at as we go through this process. So I'll try to go pretty quickly through the presentation, stop me at any time if you'd like me to slow down or explain anything, the amendments we're looking at doing primarily is to update the land use map of the general plan to make it consistent with the zoning map, and then to correct some errors that we identified as we were going through the zoning map much more closely than we apparently did with the general plan map, we were gonna update the park information of the general plan since it was adopted, McGregor is now a complete park, and Rissman Mansion Park is now proposed, we had clarified development intensity controls for mixed-use designations, add disclaimers that multifamily density is controlled by both the general plan and zoning code to close the density bonus loophole that we discovered here a couple of meetings ago, we had also proposed to eliminate the visitor accommodation land use designation of the general plan to, again, align that with the zoning code, which eliminated that district and applied an overlay zone, at a previous meeting, probably a year ago, I believe Commissioner Westman suggested that we clarify that the additional floor area ratio allowance in the village would only apply to the former theater site and not to any hotel, and then finally, we'd want to clarify that the 41st Avenue additional floor area ratio allowance applies to the entire mall site, which was always the intent, we made it much more clear in the zoning code, but it's a little bit vague in the general plan. So I'm gonna go through very quickly with some of the mapping changes, one of them is on 500 502 Bay Avenue, this is Gales and a portion of a parking lot, the general plan designation currently has these parcels highlighted in red as multifamily, when in fact, they should be mixed-use neighborhood. Along Blue Gum and Riverview, as you recall, we caught a mapping error in the zoning code where the parcels on the riverside, or excuse me, on the Capitola Avenue side of Riverview were designated as mixed-use neighborhood, and they should have been single-family residential, so we want to make that change. Along Bromer Street, there's four parcels that are currently zoned, community commercial, would be out of place, surrounded by multifamily, so we want to correct that. 911 Capitola Avenue, this is the site of the former English Tea House, and I think there was a day spa there, this is currently designated multifamily, in the zoning code, we changed it to mixed-use neighborhood, so we like to make those designations consistent. Across the street, there's a multifamily apartment complex, this was mismapped in the general plan as a mobile home park, which is adjacent to the site. There's three properties on Center Street behind Nob Hill, these are currently occupied by multifamily apartments, general plan shows them as single-family, we'd like to correct that to align it with the zoning code. 219 Central Avenue, these are the apartments right at the base of Depot Hill, these are currently designated, general plan, as single-family, we want to recognize their existing use, align it with the code, and change it to multifamily. Dazzle Lane, this is an existing planned development, multifamily or single-family type project, very small lots, it's currently designated, the general plan, as community commercial, we think this area is more appropriate to remain with some type of residential designation. Depot Hill, I'm not gonna go through a lot of these, but in general, with the zoning code, we got rid of the visitor-serving base zone and changed it to an overlay, we also eliminated some of the automatic review and open space designations to reflect the actual uses up there, this involves a number of properties, and it's basically just to align it with what we did with the zoning code. 410 Kennedy Drive, the parcel that's immediately adjacent to the city corp yard was mismapped as a public, quasi-public designation, when in fact is privately owned industrial use. 250 Monterey Avenue, this is the depot in sight, it's currently designated as visitor accommodations, as I mentioned, we're getting rid of that designation, and we would change it to a single-family zone with a visitor-serving overlay that allows the hotel to continue as a conforming use. 865 Monterey Avenue, this is next to the Shoreline Community Church, this particular property has some low-income multifamily uses on it, it was mismapped as open space, we want to fix that error. Two parcels on Opel Cliffs Drive at the east, or the western end of the city, during the zoning code update, we changed these to multifamily to reflect the current use, we'd like to make that same change in the general plan. 727 Rosedale Avenue is kind of a curious area, the general plan, we had it designated as public, quasi-public, it's a, I believe it's developed currently with a single-family but surrounded by multifamily, that's the designation of the zoning code, so we want to fix that mistake. There's two parcels occupied by the Shadow Brook, one with a restaurant, another with a parking lot, this goes back to our visitor accommodation, the elimination of that base zone, during the zoning code, we agreed to map it as mixed-use neighborhood with a visitor-serving overlay, so we would apply that designation to the restaurant, and then the parking lot parcel, change it from single-family to mixed-use neighborhood. So those are the mapping changes in terms of the park information, pretty straightforward, we just want to change a figure and a table to update the city's current park offerings. So the mixed-use designation and floor area ratio, the general plan in, in the introduction section describes how we apply intensity controls, and in mixed-use zones, it's, it's done through floor area ratio, staff proposes to clarify that in the text of the land use element to, again, state that residential development in a mixed-use zone would be subject to floor area ratio and not both floor area ratio and density, there's been some confusion on that, we just want to make it clear. The multifamily residential density issue, we talked a little bit about this with the density bonus application, it came to our attention, it's under state density bonus law, you must allow the higher density that's allowed by either the general plan or the zoning code, the general plan, we have a standard, one-size-fits-all multifamily designation that allows up to 20 dwelling units an acre, the zoning code takes a finer-grain approach and applies 10, 15, or 20, so our concern is that somebody could come in with a 10-dwelling unit per acre site and get a 20-dwelling unit per acre under the general plan, and then a density bonus on top of that, so I've worked with the city attorney, we found some language that'll close that loophole, and we propose to insert that to prevent that problem from arising. Visitor accommodations I've touched on, and then the Village Hotel floor area ratio, as I mentioned, Commissioner Westman at one meeting expressed that it was a little bit vague in the general plan as to whether the additional floor area ratio would apply to any hotel in the village or simply to the theater site, it was my recollection at the time that the intent was a theater site, there may have been commissioners or council members that had a different view, so we'd like to ferret that out and clarify it. 41st Avenue, again, just to make sure that the additional floor area ratio is applied to the entire mall site, it doesn't describe Claire specifically, it describes it as a corner of 41st and Capitola Road, so we want to make that clear that that was the original intent. So the next steps in this process is I will deliver the same presentation to the city council in the upcoming next meeting or two, based on the direction we receive, we'll prepare a general plan package, maps, and a sequo document, general plan amendments do require a 45-day public notice and review period, following the conclusion of that, we'll come back to the planning commission for recommendation, city council for adoption, and then we'll publish and distribute the new general plan with its amendments. And so that wraps up my presentation, I'd welcome any questions or recommendations for additional changes, thank you.
Questions from commissioners?
I can only say wow.
Yeah.
It's not as big a deal as it looks in the presentation.
But I think we're clear that the FAR was at the hotel site, so if that was a question from this commission, I think we're all clear on that.
Is this all just kind of errors that crept in along the way, or is this actually the evolution of?
It's a little bit of both, to be honest, when we did the zoning code, we really combed through every parcel. When we did the zoning code, we really combed through every parcel. I didn't do that candidly with the general plan, it came in kind of towards the end of it, and we caught a lot of mistakes that should have been caught earlier, and I own it.
I have a question. What does the, our zoning code and the general plan use different nomenclature for the same regions?
You know, they're largely the same. The difference is that come to mind is the visitor accommodation, visitor-serving zones, and we'll eliminate that and correct that one. The other is the general plan use residential, single-family, or R-dash SF. When we did the zoning code, we talked about that, and I think there was a desire to retain the R1 designation because everybody just was so familiar with it.
But can't the general plan be altered to...
We could certainly do that.
Because to me, that, I mean, to me, that issue about the density, and that's a part of, there's different nomencl, different language being spoken, okay, and we just didn't get it as granular in the general plan as we do in the zoning code. But there, I mean, we just called it RM, I think, in the general plan. So, I mean, to me, that would just make, it would be a lot clearer for everyone involved if we could mirror those descriptions from one document to the other. And I think the only other comment, other than, Kuda, yeah, this is quite a catch and a lot of detail, but I think forty-five days is too short of a period for public noticing. I know that's the minimum requirement, but I think, and it's maybe ultimately up to the city council, but I would like to see more time allotted for the public to be able to see it, review it, digest it, think about it, and comment on it. Because that general plan, we spent years, you know, doing that. So, those are my comments about it.
Yeah, I don't, I, great job of following up, most of these we're familiar with. I don't have a problem with the extending the forty-day notice period. I think we've got plenty of time for coastal commission reviews, so it's not going to be that big of a deal.
Okay. Anything further? Do you need a motion from us, or...
No, I think I've got everything I need unless there's additional comments.
And, certainly, yes.
Is there public comment on this item?
There is now. Please come up.
My name is Peter Petrou, and I've talked about the Rispin Mansion quite a bit in the past, and not to you, but to the city council. And I know that I'm, that our organization, which is the Santa Cruz Hostel Society, would like to use this, the Rispin Mansion as a hostel, and which is kind of approved by the coastal commission, and also the coastal conservancy would probably give some money for it, too. But basically, I'm reading here on page 113, item number two, table LU1, which there wasn't, none of these tables were listed, I don't think, in this, in this report, so it's difficult for me to understand what exactly is happening. And I may not, this might not be the right place to bring up my concerns, but it says that, that you will put the Rispin Mansion Park on the, make this, the Rispin Mansion into a park facility, which would be on the coastal act, could be approved as a hostel, as a hostel, because it's in a park, inside a park. So, you might, you know, if you don't want to have a hostel in Capitola, you may not want to approve this, okay? But I hope you do, so, because we have a hostel in Santa Cruz with forty-seven beds, and in the summertime, it's completely full every night, almost every night, and especially on weekends, and everybody in central California wants to come to the coast, and so those people who can't afford expensive motels, which are getting to be more and more expensive, seems like, can stay at a hostel, which is also getting a little bit more expensive, but not nearly as much as the, as the motels and hotels in the area. And it seems to me that we, since we encourage school groups and younger people to visit the coast, I think Capitola would benefit, because I don't think any of the hotels in Capitola are really low-cost, and the new ones, anyway, and it seems like a hostel would benefit the community at large by making a lot of young people be first-time visitors to Capitola, and it would eventually, eventually, once they make some money, purchase housing, and also utilize more expensive hotels and motels if they can get out of the house, you know, I mean, once they get used to more expensive places. So, I encourage you to maybe, on item number two, and then item number three, to make this into the Rispin Mansion, the park. I think I will look around for some money, because it'll be somewhat expensive, you know, I mean, Rispin Mansion needs quite a bit of work, but it's been sitting there for sixty years, so it seems like some things will be done, and you can't just talk about year after year after year and not do anything about it, and I think the solution that I envision to have it as a youth hostel.
Please wrap up, Peter.
Okay, very good, thank you much.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other members of the public in the audience, I will bring this matter back, and I believe we've given direction to staff that they need to move forward with this item, so thank you again. With that, we'll come to the director's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few items. Last city council meeting, we had another lively discussion about traffic control in the Jewel Box neighborhood. Effectively, the city council abandoned their previous direction and directed staff to evaluate additional options and to return to them at a future date. In April, we're going to be returning the city council also for another discussion about our marijuana ordinance. The council has expressed an interest in allowing limited retail sales in the commercial, regional commercial zoning districts, so basically the area north Capitola Road on Forty-first. So, we're sending some options to them. They did also indicate they are not interested in any cultivation or processing facilities in town. And then finally, the League of California Cities is holding their annual Planning Commissioners Academy in April, between the fourth and the sixth, and this year, it's local, it's in Monterey at the Hyatt Regency Hotel, so if any members aren't interested, we have budget, we can certainly pay for the entry fees. I've got a flyer here, I can leave with any of you. They also have information on their website, they'd be happy to email if you're interested. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. So, now it comes to commission communication, Ted?
Yeah, I didn't want to muck up the hearing with this, but it has to do with the hearing we had today, sort of, because I want to thank the staff for digging into the history of the adjacent property, which was the Kisseling property. So, the reason it had stuck in my mind is because what happened ten years ago is that the Planning Commission denied all the variances that they were applying for, three unanimously, Commissioner Harland, Commissioner Burke, myself, and then the applicant appealed to the city council, and the planning commissioner, which is incomprehensible to me, recommended that the city council grant an appeal and overturn the planning commission. Now, I know this staff would not do that, but I thought that was a, an abuse of the process completely, and I, so now we look back, this comes up now, ten years later, and what do we have? We've got, see, the difference between staff and planning commissioners are the staff have expertise, but they get, they come and they go, and they get different jobs, and the planning commissioners have roots in the community that are different from the staff, and you couldn't have a better example than this. So, the planning commissioner, planning director, who took it upon herself to support an appeal of the unanimous decision of the Planning Commission, left the city about a few months later, lasting less than a year in the city, and moved on to some, to another job, and so, you know, that, all that history just kind of came to mind when, when this application came up and I got the report of what happened there. I think it's, it's worth its lesson, because I don't think anyone would, would do that, but I mean, the difference between the roles of the commission and the staff is what this brings up.
Very good.
I'm going to ditto that, because I wasn't around then, and it was a real surprise for me to read that whole report and understand it, and it was, it was very valid information.
Well, and I think it goes back to underline the whole issue with variances and why we need to review them so much, is that, you know, we had an individual who didn't want us to grant some variances for the very variances they got, and it just creates, we just need to do our due diligence when we approve those things, so I agree, good job.
And thank you, thank you for those comments, and I think the only thing I would add is, I saw that I was on the council at the time that came out, but I have, I have no idea, I don't know how I voted, and so, and that's not in the packet, I was, I was certainly looking for it, and, but...
I have one question of staff before we close. The, I think I saw an email or some correspondence saying that the zoning code was now adopted in, outside of the coastal, and so, that's going to be available. Is there going to be anything that compares the two, or when you guys do your staff reports, are you going to have to go through every location and draw the, the appropriate zoning requirements?
So, I've been working on getting that live online for you and printing. Today, Ben gave me the most up-to-date, we're just combing through it and making sure there's no more underlines or crossouts in the edits, because we found a couple of those going through. So, I will be printing those off for you, but as we move forward, any projects that come in that are outside of the coastal zone, our tables will reflect the new code. So, and we've already today had questions about a sign over in the CC zone on Thirty-eighth Avenue, but...
So, it's going to create a quite a little nightmare for you guys for a while.
Talking about challenges, real quick, this new marijuana dispensary in the commercial retail, or regional area, and I listened, I saw part of their, the city council discussion was notifications. Are we going to have notifications for all those businesses in that area that this change may occur within that?
That's the idea, yeah.
Okay.
Any other commissioner comments? Hearing none, I'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good job.